A lot of people don't do that, but I did. But, you know. So, anyway, I guess instead of beating the horrors to death, you know, hopefully you people, the school board before they accept these agendas, ask for some more information. The people who's providing the information for hearings and that they actually provide some detailed facts that people can, that means something to people. So, anyway, thank you.
That was it, yes.
Our public hearings are officially closed and we will move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Bush, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Good evening, thank you. We have several things to celebrate tonight and to inform our community about. First and foremost, our facility master plan work continues, but want to backtrack a little bit to our elementary work. Arthur and Garfield are having input sessions and regarding the new build coming up. And so, again, we're looking for our community to provide input. Tomorrow night, October 11th, from four to eight, there will be an input session at Arthur Elementary in the gym. And Tuesday, October 18th, from four to eight, there will be an input session at Garfield Elementary. And so, we hope that folks can make those evening input sessions for our elementary work. Last week, we were able to announce some really big news for our district, that we have won the Magnet Schools of America grant. Cedar Rapids Community School District is the first in Iowa to receive this grant, and we received it for $14.84 million over the next five years. So proud of the work behind this and the team that puts the logistics together and the opportunities that are going to be created for our kids through our Magnet School program. So, thank you for the hard work behind this, and we look forward to informing our community of the work ahead.
Awesome, thank you for the report.
Oh, not done yet, President Tominski, sorry. Yeah, so, this is National School Lunch Week with Celebration, 10th of this, week the 10th through the 14th of October. And this celebration is really about how important it is to provide healthy school lunches and breakfast to our kids. So, shout out to our team who worked so hard in our nutrition department, but thanks to them for all their hard work and the education that comes along with nutritious programs of meals in our schools. And then finally, just up on your radar, October 21st, please mark your calendars, is America Reads Day. More information will come about that for volunteers to read in their schools, but we look forward to our community joining in for America Reads Day on October 21st. And that's all I have for you tonight, Mr. Tominski. I'll get it over to you.
All right, thank you for the report. Are there any board reports? Next, we'll hear from those who have requested to address the board. Laurel, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
Yes, we do have members that have registered to speak.
How many speakers do we have signed up for public comment?
We have six this evening.
Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. With six speakers this evening, you'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from individuals speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outburst as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Laurel, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Kate Hoag, and Kate is representing the Cedar Rapids Education of Office Professional Associates. She's here to speak about secretaries.
Good evening. Kate Hoag, 2750 Otis Road Southeast. And I'm with Criopa, our secretary union. So, I was taking a look at our APLATRAC job postings, and I'm happy to report that, as usual, there are only a few, three, regular, open postings for secretary positions. And I want to celebrate our really dedicated, stable, efficient, and high-performing secretaries in our buildings. And I would ask that you would look, when we're able to look again, at our pay rates to help keep that to be the case by improving the base wages. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lawrence Winklowski. There is no topic listed.
Lawrence Winklowski, two things I want to touch about. First was the facility master plan. And then, seeing part of the presentation, I have two concerns with it. One is the Aquatic Center. My fear with the Aquatic Center is that we will go cheap on it, and instead of spending maybe another half million dollars or something like that to make it better, we will go with the budget, and that's sort of a concern. The other is location of the middle school. Found out that it's not a permanent place determined, and we're talking about, I don't think it's good for equity within our district. I think there's a lot of problems with it. And I will not vote for a plan that does not have a better location for the middle Then, other thing is, I always felt sort of, I don't know, insulted, or maybe that's not the right word, but the fact that we're doing a superintendent search, it really bothers We have a superintendent who's been doing a great job. We have a deputy superintendent who's been doing a great job. And now, we're going to go out and spend money and to get some consultants which, anyway, to find us a better candidate. Our deputy superintendent, a new contract. So, why did you do that if you don't have faith in our deputy superintendent? You know, there's a certain level of synergy that has been built up over the last couple years with the Duras Show, and then COVID, and even some of the committees that are going on. But, so you're willing to risk all that synergy to go through this process? I don't understand it. You know, so, okay, if you hire somebody from the outside to be superintendent, you'll probably have to find another deputy superintendent. Because I sure have a lot of respect for Nicole, but, you know, she's the ultimate professional, and, you know, she gives so much, just like Noreen does, to this district. And then you guys go through this. I don't get the game. Someone's got to explain this to me, and I, hopefully that when the board governance comes, there'll be an explanation for this. Because, after, lack of words, I think it's stupid. And I understand why we've done it in the past, but at this point in time, based on everything that's gone, has been going on, and how this school administration has taken everything on, you know, without, you know, pushing it off to the side, it just makes no sense to me at all. None whatsoever. And I think you guys really need to come up with a, think about what you're doing here. Because, you know, you're not showing any confidence in the current administration. And in some respects, this is sort of an insult towards Noreen, because she's been working with Nicole very, together, to make improvements to this district. And now, all of a sudden, I don't get it. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanya Johnson. Tanya is here to speak about teacher PL.
Tanya Johnson, 3816 Riverside Drive, Northeast. I just wanted to come today and tell you what a wonderful PL, professional learning time, we had last Monday at the elementaries. Our, we had several teachers in our building, and I would have to assume that was across the district, that very, very, very much appreciated the math extra time to work on their units, to get their number corner up, to get everything ready. And the best part of it, it was at the very beginning of the month, so then they were able to continue working and getting October ready. So, I know we haven't gotten a survey on that yet, and I know generally we do, so in case that didn't come out, I just wanted to be sure to let you all know that that was very much appreciated. Also, I wanted to just put a little thought out there that, as we're looking at a new calendar, we worked, CRA was behind it, and very many years, we talked about having those Fridays and early outs. But, the early outs and having only an hour and a half, is that right, 2:30? An hour and a half, an hour and 45 minutes, it's not enough time to get done what we really need to get done. And as we look at new calendars, I think it would be good to just think about how we can get the most bang for our buck. And, like I said, having a survey to find out if that was the same at middle schools and high schools. But I know elementary generally thought that that was a great day, and they got a lot done during that. So, thank you very much. Plus, it's good to see you all.
Our next speaker is Kelly McMahon. Kelly is here representing Cedar Rapids Education Association. The topic is childhood community screening.
Good evening, Kelly McMahon, 5508 Dostal Drive, Southwest Cedar Rapids, 52404. Yes, I'm going to read it to the record, as I'm supposed to. So, anyway, I'm here, I serve as the treasurer for the Cedar Rapids Education Association. And last fall, I was here to talk to you about a conference that we were doing at the Iowa State Education Association around the documentary called Chasing Childhood. Well, mark your calendars, on Saturday, October 22nd, beginning at 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock, doors open at 9:30, we are doing a community screening in partnership with Teenager Place and the Marquee Institute of Learning at the downtown public library in the Whipple Auditorium. And the reason why we're doing this, which aligns so perfectly with the work that district is having to do around the stuff with the DOJ, the Department of Justice, plans and stuff like that, is the fact that we need to really look at what we're doing at our elementary, middle, and high school level in regards to what do our students' day look like? Are we allowing our students to have opportunities to be students? Do our children have sufficient amount of time of recess? The Pediatric Association would say they need an hour a day of recess time for kids in kindergarten through fifth grade. Are they getting that in all of our schools? Nope. And that's an area of inequity that this district needs to address by having policy in place that says children will get so many minutes of recess every single day. Some schools have two recesses, some schools have one. Some schools have 40 minutes of recess, some schools have 30 minutes of recess. That's an inequity. And what we know about recess and what we know about play, child-directed center play, which some of our kindergarten classrooms have them, and some of them do not, is that that's how, is the most effective place for children to learn. Play is effective, it's how young children learn. Play also allows children to practice language skills, so as our district has a growing population of English language learners, children need to have a safe place to practice their language. Not just our English language learners, but also our students who are going through speech and language services. Play is a safe place for children to practice their language skills and their communication skills, which, oh my goodness, can you believe, that's the standard we're supposed to work on? Language, communication, it's craziness, I know. Also, regulation, executive functioning skills, all these important skills that children need in order to help when they're feeling frustrated at a task or a social conflict situation, it's where you learn to practice those skills. That way, you can become independent and have those conversations to solve those problems. Some of my kindergartners, because I make them do and I coach them through it, are already starting to use iMessages on their own, and we've only been in school for 33 days. But that's the power of play. When we have an appropriate amount at the elementary level, guess what happens? Middle and high schoolers now have those skills that they need in order to be successful and also handle the academic demands that are being placed on them. Also, there's the issue of our children being overstructured throughout the school day. I know it's hard to believe that we're telling our children what to do all day long, but we pretty much do. And that's a problem. Children need to have an opportunity to make decisions for themselves in the day. And not just elementary, but intermediate and high school, they all need it, because that's important. We, as grownups, need it. We engage in play activities, whether it's at a tailgate event, or playing bags, or with friends, or having board game nights, we engage in it as adults, because we need it. It's what humans need. And so, please come to this event to learn about why we need to make sure that we have equitable policies in place here in our district that are giving our children what they need, which is time to be children. They need recess, they need centers, they need self-discovery, opportunity, free choice time. They all need it. And please, let's give it to them, so that way we can address the behavior, emotional well-being of our children from preschool all the way through 12th grade. Thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you there.
Our next speaker is Rachel Klosak. Rachel is here to speak about administration needs in new school buildings.
Hi, my name is Rachel Klosak. I live at 512 Aaron Court, Northeast. I have three boys that attend Cedar Rapids Schools. My oldest just started TAF this year, my middle is in fourth grade, and my youngest is in first grade, both at Maple Grove. I myself received Outstanding Building Volunteer last year for Jackson, am in my fourth year as PTA president, and just received my subauthorization last spring, and have been subbing in Cedar Rapids Schools this year part-time. So, you could say I'm fully invested in our public schools. It's a running joke at Maple Grove that I'm there all the time, and frequently asked by staff if I'm subbing, and if I'm not, I'm usually attending to PTA matters. Last week, a teacher referred to me as an honorary staff member. My kids all attended Jackson, and my oldest started the same year as our current principal, as the current principal started as the principal of Jackson. We've incredibly blessed with him as my kids' principal, and in my humble opinion, have some of the most amazing, kind, and passionate teachers, school administrators, and staff one could ask for. They are always working above and beyond to be the best place for each and every one of the students they serve. We are so thankful for our beautiful new school, and we have such an amazing opportunity with our school community, and being able to experience firsthand this district's long-held plans come to life. Our new combined staff and administration are incredible, and we are so lucky to have two groups of teachers and staff that have blended so seamlessly. But I'm not, but I'm sure I don't need to tell you that it's been a rough few years for students, teachers, and administrators. Teaching and education have been at the front and center of a multitude of issues, and have been draining and stressful, to say the least. Distance learning, technology issues, increased mental health issues, political dissension, learning loss, et cetera. Teachers and school administrators have been there, right at the center, experiencing it all. We hear often of burnout being the result of added stresses in a variety of careers and job fields, and have already seen the effects. With our brand-new school, we have a school that's nearly the size of two old schools combining into one. And while we have the added benefit of having more pooled resources, we essentially still only have the same number of administrative staff as we did previously at Jackson, who are now needing to attend to approximately 200 additional students. I'm concerned we're setting out for burnout with our administrators at Maple Grove and all of these new schools in the future, without any sort of evaluation and audit of how our staff are handling the change immediately following a new school community. We will then move on to the next stage of facilities plan. I'm aware that we have built a pause-in between phases, but these could be years after the initial school, first and second built within the phase. Without an in-depth evaluation, talking to administrators about workloads and transitions, we will inevitably have future issues. We are asking a building secretary who has worked in the district for nearly 30 years to handle the workload of 200 more students' parents and function in the same respect. You're asking one principal and one counselor to handle proportionately more behavioral issues after a challenging few years resulting in overall more behavioral, mental issues, learning delays with more students. A principal to simultaneously handle 200 more sets of parents, double the amount of classroom observations, and with all those same numbers of meetings and hours in one day. The amount of responsibilities and tasks in their position they are required to handle for 560 students within a single day is just not humanly possible individually. Our middle schools and some bigger elementary schools, some of which have similar numbers to ours, have more administrative staffs to support the number of students. A vice principal, more than one instructional coach, multiple secretaries, counselors, student support staff, dedicated nurses, et cetera. I say this not only as an observation, but hearing the frustration of teachers and staff. They're frustrated of what they see, feeling like they aren't getting the resources and support they need because administrators are stretched too thin. They're pushed in the direction of burnout, and inevitably, we could learn, lead to, this could lead to losing staff, talented staff and teachers from our district we can't afford to lose, and will in turn be detrimental to our schools, students, and community. I am only one parent at this new school, but I feel like I have a unique perspective. I'm not only a parent, I'm a PTA president, volunteer, and a substitute teacher. I work at different grade levels with different teachers in different schools, and I'm a part of the school community in a multifaceted way. So, I hear from all different directions, from all different groups, all different perspectives. And I can assure you, I am not the only one paying attention and noticing this problem. Thank you for your time and dedication to our students and schools and the opportunity to speak before you. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Christine Lehman Engeldau. She is representing Moms Demand Action, and her topic is a gun bill on ballot.
Hi, my name's Christine Lehman Engeldau. I live at 1635 140th Street Northwest in Swisher. So, I'm not in the district, but I do represent Moms Demand Action. I'm the Cedar Rapids Lead, Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. So, gun safety is on the ballot in Iowa this year, and voters will consider a constitutional amendment that states the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. The southern state of Iowa affirms and recognizes this right to be a fundamental individual right. Any and all restrictions of this right shall be subject to strict scrutiny. It's almost a tongue twister. Strict scrutiny is not in the U.S. Second Amendment. Strict scrutiny is what makes this amendment very different and very extreme. So, what is strict scrutiny and how will it potentially change things? It will require a judge to look at the, any gun-related offense in a different light. The gun lobby claims that strict scrutiny amendments restore the right to keep and bear arms, when what is, what they really do is threaten public safety laws, forcing judges to apply the highest judicial standard when analyzing fire-related laws, sorry. Only three other states in the United States have a similar version, Alabama, Louisiana, and Missouri. All three of these states rank in the top five for highest rates of gun deaths in the United States. We do not want to follow in their footsteps. In Louisiana, after strict scrutiny passed, a convicted domestic abuser challenged the constitutionality of a state law prohibiting possession of a firearm by people convicted of misdemeanor domestic violence crimes. After it was passed in Louisiana and Missouri, convicted felons challenged state laws that prohibited felons from possessing firearms. At least one lower court found that Louisiana's law prohibiting felons from having guns was unconstitutional. Fortunately, the Louisiana Supreme Court reversed this ruling. This extreme approach would invite frivolous litigation, undermine decades of case law in the state courts, and put in jeopardy many moderate, common-sense gun laws. Here's what's at stake in Iowa. Our current laws keep felons from having firearms, keep perpetrators of domestic violence from having firearms, keep guns out of schools, keep restrictions on machine guns and other offensive weapons. These are the types of laws, if challenged under this extreme version of the Second Amendment, might be declared unconstitutional. There are three things this reckless gun amendment will do. Number one, threaten public safety laws by forcing judges to apply the highest judicial standard when analyzing firearm-related laws. Two, invite costly, frivolous lawsuits. And three, restrict future legislatures from passing future gun safety legislation. The bottom line in this proposed amendment will make Iowa less safe. It will. I am here today to ask the board to stand for gun safety and pass a resolution in opposition to this dangerous gun amendment, public measure number one. It's going to be on the backside of the ballot. Let voters know this proposed amendment is too extreme for our schools and families. Turn the ballot over and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote?
I'm speaking clarification on BA 23142, the selection of the vendor.
So, that's the tabulation?
Yeah.
Hosted backup services for Google Workspace?
Right. Just some clarification of why the vendor selection.
I also would like the board to consider BA 23011-01. There are a number of policy manuals on the agenda for this evening. I would like to have the board consider the first three and the last one, and I would like to table the others in between until a future board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Do we have somebody here that can provide that clarification?
I did receive an answer to that question, but did you want to talk about that, Carissa?
So, your question was, why was the vendor selected? Of choice? Yes. Okay. So, if you look at, the main differentiator, aside from the price comparison, was obviously meeting spec, but there are some very important factors that are included, like the cost to back up for Google Classroom. So, that's one important spec. But, the total annual cost, in addition to meeting the spec, was the qualifier for vendor two.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you that well.
Okay. So, if you look at the total annual cost at the bottom for vendor two, it is a lower-cost vendor, in addition to meeting the spec, but one of the costs to back up Google Classroom was included as well. Vendor three not available, and then vendor one did have a cost, so.
Okay.
Vendor two is the selected vendor of choice.
Okay. Thank you.
Were there any other items?
You just clarified what you asked on the BA 23-011-01. Laurel? Right, so, the very first three documents, which are Policy 10101 and Regulation 402.3, plus the last procedure, which is 801A, I would like the board to consider this evening as an information item. All the other documents that are listed there are, I'm asking to be tabled this evening to come back at a future board meeting. And why are we tabling them? We were asked to provide additional information to the Department of Justice, and so, while we're waiting for review on their end, they've asked us to table this. Thank you.
So, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with those, with those items removed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report and the resolution for instructional time reporting in hours versus days.
Director Merschbach?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
President Tminski?
Aye. Moving on to administration, we have the approval of the resolution determining to proceed with issuance of school infrastructure sales, services, and used tax revenue bonds, authorizing and setting parameters for the sale of bonds, approving use of official statements, approving bond purchase agreements, and taking additional action thereon. Are there any questions for Carla or John? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Cindy, did you second that?
I seconded it, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Merschbach?
No.
President Tminski?
Aye. Next up is the annual financial highlights from fiscal year twenty-two. I'll invite Carla to the podium for her presentation.
Good evening, Board of Directors. I would like to present to you the fiscal year 2022 financial highlights. The first slide is a statement of revenues and expenditures for all funds. On the left-hand side is the box for FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two for all funds, including the percentage of increase or decrease. The right-hand side box is the same information by fund. This is a thirty-thousand-foot view of the district's revenues and expenditures for FY twenty-two. In the yellow highlight, the general fund had a surplus of six million dollars. We will talk about that more on the next few slides. Student activity had four hundred and forty-one thousand dollar surplus. Remember, the board authorized a transfer of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in August from the general fund of the student activity to cover COVID-related decrease in revenues. The sales tax fund, or SAVE, had a deficit of seventeen point two-five million dollars. This is primarily due to the construction of Maple Grove, which was funded by SAVE bonds that were sold in FY nineteen and FY twenty. Notice the school nutrition fund had a three point two-nine million dollar surplus, and this was due to the federal reimbursement of all meals. The next slide is a general fund summary. The general fund is the main operating fund of the district, and it represents approximately two-thirds of the entire district budget. The columns are prior year-to-date, current year-to-date, annual budget, and the year-to-date percent of budget. The year-to-date percent of budget for revenues was ninety-nine point six-five percent, and expenditures was ninety-eight point nine-nine percent, indicating that budget-to-actual is very closely related for the district. Prior year-to-date for federal was sixteen point six million dollars, and current year-to-date is almost twenty-seven point five million for all federal funding. This is primarily due to ESER. We had a surplus of six million dollars in the current year, which was one point five million more than budgeted. This is primarily due to low staff numbers and ESER funding. The district is using ESER funding to cover expenses and grow some of our categorical fund balances, and we are continuing this in FY twenty-three, especially at the Truman ECC. Our general fund ending fund balance was almost forty million dollars, but that is still a not-enough fund balance at an average spending rate of nineteen million dollars per month to get us through July, August, and September while we have lower revenues and no state aid. The next slide is the general fund historical summary, and in this historical summary, you will see that our general fund revenue continues to grow every year, and so do our expenses. We had significant deficits in FY twenty-nineteen, FY twenty-twenty, due to COVID and the derecho, but have covered those with surpluses in FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two. Our ending fund balance grew by seventeen point nine percent, but still only covers a little over two months of expenditures. Now I'll go over three important factors for the general fund. There are three important factors are miscellaneous revenue, expenditures by area, and revenue by category. Miscellaneous revenue in FY twenty-nineteen was twenty-five point six million dollars. In FY twenty, it was twenty-six million. In FY twenty-one, it was thirty million. In FY twenty-two, it was thirty-eight point six million dollars, which was thirteen million dollars higher than FY twenty-two, and this is due to ESER. We only have two years left of ESER allocations remaining, FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. The next slide is general fund spending split by category. These categories match up to our certified budget. Notice that seventy-eight point seven-three percent is the total for our salaries and benefits, which is in line with the state average of approximately eighty Total general fund revenues, it was two hundred and thirty-five million. The pie chart shows us that fifty point nine is coming from state funding and thirty-six point four-two percent from local funding. The federal programs was twenty-seven point five million, like I indicated on the last two slides, because of ESER. Unspent authorized budget report, this is a historical look at our unspent authorized budget. Notice the SBRC Modified Supplemental Amount Other, number one, is in yellow, and that's for two point one million dollars. This is for LEP excess cost. It is currently estimated because the state portal for this calculation and request to the SBRC is currently being built. A resolution will be coming to the board on October twenty-fourth to ask for SBRC approval for these excess costs. Two rows below that, you'll notice our special education deficit, which was approved last meeting for seven point one million dollars. It was down from thirteen point three million dollars in the previous year. This is due to low special ed staffing and transportation cost. The light blue line is the maximum authorized budget. The green line is our unspent authorized budget, which was just over thirty million dollars. This is up five million dollars from the previous year, and our general fund balance is thirty-nine million. The district wants these two numbers to align so that we have money and we have the ability to spend it. On the next slide is our solvency history and current report. You will notice our solvency ratio is thirteen point one percent for FY twenty-two. Notice it is right in line with where the district has been over the past six years. At this time, I would like to introduce Crystal Brahman as the new accounting manager. Her and her team prepared all the financial reports and list of invoices that come to the board. Also Derek Lausch as the new business services lead. Derek does budgeting and grants and categoricals for the district and prepares the budget information that comes to the board. These two, along with their teams, assist me and do a great job for the district. Does one stand up? Thanks, guys. We have any questions?
I'll defer to my fellow board members, see if there's any questions. Director Merschbach?
I have two quick questions on the pie chart after the three important factors slide.
Okay.
First one, so salaries and benefits, about a hundred and eighty million. Do you have, like, ballpark off the top of your head, like, what's this building, like, non-school building admin has, like, a portion of that? Is that in that salary and benefit?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I have no idea. I can get that number for you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
And then the purchase services, I can imagine a lot of things going there. That's just like the third really big number on that. What kind of things go in there, and are there any big-ticket items under that twenty-five million that really make it so high, or is it just an accumulation of everything throughout the course of years?
Pretty much accumulation of everything. That would be all of our contracts. That would be AEA flow-through. So AEA flow-through's almost a million dollars of that. So it's a culmination of all services that are provided to the district.
So like, I was looking at one on the consent agenda today, and it was like seven thousand or something, and so that just keeps adding up over. There's not one thing that's like fifteen million of the twenty-five or something like that.
No.
It's just a bunch of stuff. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you so much, Carla, for the presentation.
Thank you.
We have two items left on the agenda. We're going to actually switch them just as a courtesy to our guests, if that's all right. So we'll do board governance, and then we'll finish up the meeting with learning and leadership. So on tonight's agenda is for the board to hear three presentations regarding a firm's ability to assist with a superintendent search process. We have invited Ray and Associates to present, as well as Hazard Young, Atea, and then GR recruiting. Just pointing my fellow board members to scoring rubric that's at your desk. This outlines some of the areas that we considered important in these presentations. So I'm just pointing out some of the items that we had highlighted and had shared with each of the presenters tonight. So certainly, this board had expressed an interest in hearing about the process that the firms use, the strategies that they employ, successes that they've had in national searches, and then certainly with urban and districts similar to ours, and then, of course, cost. So each of these presenters has been given fifteen minutes to present. We did decide to refrain from questions at this tonight, just to provide equity for all of the presenters. So fifteen minutes, and then at the end of the meeting, I think we'll send scoring rubrics to you, Secretary.
You can just leave them with me tonight.
Just leaving here.
Yep.
Hear from Ray and Associates?
Okay, yes. Yes, you look so familiar. And I was looking at your name here, and I'm like, yeah.
I actually, I grew up with Schoen Felder. Oh, they've got your names.
My name is Molly Swartzoff. I'm the vice president with Ray and Associates. I am actually a product of Cedar Rapids Community School District, so it's great to be here. Cindy Garlock was actually my teacher, so I had to stop and say hi. We won't waste too much of your time. You're going to hear a lot of repetitive information between us and the other firms. We all kind of do very similar things. So we've got our summary up on the page right now, and this is just some highlights about us. And then we did get your criteria for evaluation, so we're just going to hit those key points tonight just because we are limited on time. I'm going to let my friends here introduce themselves as well, and then we'll just start going through this document that is in your folder. We do welcome you to go through the other materials at your leisure, but just for the sake of time, we're just going to go through the criteria for evaluation and hit those key points for you.
I'm also a vice president with Ray and Associates.
My name's Kevin Hatfield. I am a Ray and Associates Midwest associate to help with recruiting, and I'm really honored to be here tonight. I happen to be the superintendent of schools in the Sigourney Community School District. I retired once. I'm not sure if COVID hit me. I'm not sure what happened, but I'm back in it, and I'm loving every minute of it, being with students. And it's a very small district. We were kind of conversing about, you know, the comparison of Sigourney, five hundred and fifty-two kids in Cedar Rapids. However, I will tell you that Cedar Rapids, forever I've taught in the Pleasant Valley Community School District, we always look to Cedar Rapids. What are they doing in literacy? What are they doing in math? And so just wanted to point that out. Also, just want to take a quick second to say my heart to Noreen. I've met Noreen, known Noreen for a long time. I just want her to know. We think a lot of her. I personally do. My job is on behalf of Ray and Associates. Thanks for letting us be here with you. We're going to honor your time. I'm going to just go over the criteria we use, the process we use, to go through the process with everyone, okay? Forty-five years of experience with Ray and Associates, what interests me most, very diverse group of candidates, they live that model. They live that model. And so let me just talk about a couple of things on behalf of Ray and Associates. First off, what is the Ray way? What is the process? First one is very customizable approach. It tries to be copied by other groups, but I will tell you that it's very customizable. I've lived it. I've watched the process work. Board input, board preparation, step one. We'll interview the entire board. We'll interview individual board members. We'll work through to help you develop some initial qualifiers for the kind of leader that you would like to have. We'll go through timelining. We'll work through that process without reading every bullet to you. Next step in this process, we're going to do profile development for the candidate you want. That's going to include your input as a board, but also staff's input about what stakeholders do we want to have interviewed. And again, it's customizable. There's going to be twelve groups, twenty groups, thirty groups. We're going to make that work. We have a full-time staff to help you do that and get as much input as we can to build that profile for the kind of leader you want for the district. And go through the very intensive recruiting and screening process. We're going to go ahead and get all the media pieces together for you. And again, I'll go back to one of the things I know about Ray and Associates is the pool of candidates is the largest in the country. So obviously, the advantages there are tremendous from across the entire nation, not just a Midwest feel to it. So you've got basically board input. We've got our profile. We're going to go through the screening process and set that up for the board with your input. Next thing is, we're going to do candidate presentation pieces, and we're going to do consensus building based on what we've developed and brought from all the community and all these groups, and we're going to put together a that really start to hone in what this leader, who this leader should be, and what their qualities and traits should be. Finally, we're going to work through that whole first interview process with everyone, put that together for you, and then do a selection process for a finalist, right? And we'll end up getting that process in place for you, work for the board to have that in place with interviewing groups, interviewing questions. And then finally, the whole media package piece to go out to help the board communicate that final selection. So our six steps are there for the board to be able to go through. It's customizable. We're going to be alongside by side with the board and with all your stakeholders to try to figure out, how do we get the best leader for the Cedar Rapids Community School District needs?
So following Kevin, I just want to point out that there's more details in the proposal, pages nine through thirteen. Read at your leisure. Coffee table reading is what I say. So with regard to recruitment, in addition to our database, which is about three thousand people, we also have twenty-eight thousand unique hits to our website itself each month. We will work with the board to determine advertising as it is a board decision. Included in our pricing is a thirty-day posting with Edweek, which we cover at our cost, but we will work with the board. Obviously, the key is diversity. So we would suggest NAPSE, ALIS, the Black Educators, and the Latino to cover those groups. There's also some diversity websites out there themselves, such as I Am Diversity. And then we would also obviously recommend AAAS, which is the Superintendents Association. But again, it's the board's decision as to who they advertise with. If we're selected, we would come to the first meeting with the list of suggested advertising venues and work with you to determine which one. As we go through the screening process, after the advertising, recruitment, and all that, we go through our screening process to look at the candidates that have applied, to compare them to the profile that has been created and approved by the board. During that process, we do our consensus building, as Kevin said, which compares candidates to each other, and this is done by the board, where one candidate is compared to the next, and so on and so forth, to come up with a total score and a ranking. And the ranking is for pretty much discussion. As an example, if you have ten candidates and somebody ranks first and somebody ranks seventh, it's up to the board to make the ultimate decision as to who moves forward into the interview process. And kind of jumping ahead, but part of our process is to, once we know who the finalists are, as part of the background work, is that we do cover the cost of a professional background check for those two to three finalists. That includes civil criminal background checks, sex offender registry, educational verification, as well as driving information.
Third point we wanted to hit was talking about success and average
Third point we wanted to hit was talking about success and average tenure. Our placement tenure averages approximately eight years within the last several years. One of the questions asked was how often is placement guarantee used? In the last five years, we've had to use that twice. The next question that we wanted to touch on was the urban depth of pool of candidates for a large district with large urban experience. We're fully capable of meeting all the requirements. We're Cedar Rapids Community School District. We clearly understand the search process. It's what we do every single day. You guys are lucky enough. You don't have to. We have part of that process is what's necessary for a large and urban school district to follow to be successful. We typically receive more completed applications for districts we represent than any other search firm in the country, something we're very proud of. Even during the pandemic, we were still seeing strong numbers, higher than our competitors, and that's all across the country. When we get to the time of presenting candidates to you all, we break it down of who came from what state. And right now, we are hitting 50 states pretty consistently. Hawaii and Vermont still gave me a hard time, so. But we typically hit about 50. We strongly believe in building an accurate profile for the position. So when we're talking to your stakeholders and talking to as a board, we're going to find out who you are, what you're looking for, where Cedar Rapids is really thriving, where it may need a little bit of extra help. And we're going to develop that profile based off of your needs. And that's who we will bring to you, is that candidate based off of your needs. We interview, we talk to you, we interview you each individually. We talk with your stakeholders that you identify. And then we look for candidates with the appropriate skill sets and personality traits that will be a good fit for Cedar Rapids Community School District. And as I mentioned, I take this very personal because I'm a product of Cedar Rapids Schools. I live about 10 minutes out, so this is a source of pride for me to find you someone amazing.
Last but not least, the cost. That's always the important part. So our fee for the search is $20,000. That includes all the meetings with the board and as many stakeholder meetings or as few stakeholder meetings as the board elects to have. There's no charge per meeting. It's just an all-inclusive base fee. So in addition to that, would be any expenses that we would have. Since Molly and I are local, there's no expense for us. Kevin would have a slight bit of travel, but not very much. So there's no hotels, none of that needed. And then there's advertising on top of that. I would say an estimate of probably $1,200, depending on what the board selects for the venues. I would say estimate no more than probably $1,500, depending again on which venues the board selects. We take pride. We are a national firm, even though we are in Iowa, but that does not mean that the best person isn't here. But our goal is to make the decision very difficult for you, whether it's somebody here or whether it's somebody from South Carolina or Illinois, whatever the case may be. So our goal is to find the right fit, not just a fit. So in the packet, it mentions our guarantee. We do have a two-year guarantee that if barring act of God, something happens, whether the candidate leaves or the board decides it's not the right fit, we come back and do the search again at no additional fee, other than whatever the advertising or expenses were. As Molly said, we've had to do that twice. Once was due to a death and once was COVID-related issues in the community and the sitting superintendent. So again, it's the right fit, not just a fit. And then we also have the five-year guarantee where we do not recruit for five years a candidate that we have placed. So I think that's it. Right?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like about five minutes to maybe do your scoring.
Is that all right? It'll take about five minutes for scoring, and then we'll have the second presentation if that works.
Oh, sure. I'll tell the crew. Thanks.
About a minute remaining.
All ready?
About 40 seconds.
Our second presentation this evening will be from Hazard, Young, Atiya Associates. Peter Flynn.
Thank you, President Tominski. Members of the board, Superintendent Bush, members of the staff and public, we're honored this evening to be presenting on behalf of Hazard, Young, Atiya, and Associates. And we also bring greetings from Bill Atiya, one of the founders of our firm, who had the pleasure of working in this district in the recent past. We know you've had a chance to read over our proposal, so in the next few minutes, we're going to highlight our approach and what you can expect from us. There are two colleagues, Kelvin Adams and Chris Nacastro. And we're going to ask them to briefly introduce themselves at this time. And Kelvin, if you'll go first, please, alphabetically.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present. My name is Kelvin Adams. I'm currently superintendent of St. Louis City. I'll be leaving the district on December 31st and look forward to our conversation this afternoon and look forward to possibly working with you as you find the best candidate for your district.
Thank you. Chris?
Hi. I'm very happy to be with all of you this evening. I hope your meeting is going well. My name is Chris Nacastro. I was previously a superintendent in the St. Louis, Missouri area, and most recently served as Commissioner of Education in the state of Missouri. Pleased to be with you and look forward to working with you.
As we stay, I'm Peter Flynn and been with the firm for about 10 years doing searches. And previous to that, I was a superintendent for 34 years in four different states. And before that, a classroom teacher and a central office administrator. So that's who we are. Our intent is as the HYA team that would work with you, if we're fortunate enough to receive that contract. We represent over 50 years in the superintendency, and we would be working with you side by side throughout the entire search. We've been learning about your school district, getting up to date. Since one of my jobs was in Davenport, Iowa, I was familiar with your school district. And but we've been learning about it through what's on your website and watching your board meetings and reading other publicly available information. We began looking at some of the fundamental information, like your vision statement with every learner future-ready. In addition to that, we've learned about your commitment to your mission. And you're to be applauded, I think, for the way you've gone about your strategic planning, using theories of action for each segment of that and establishing goals that are clear and time-sensitive and that also are within the context of the profile of a student. And you'd be to be commended for that astute way to go about the learning for children. Just very quickly about our firm, Nationwide Associates help out with the recruitment of the best talent. And then each of our searches has executive oversight, and our firm is professionally staffed with full-time offices and a technological infrastructure. Our process, which includes our survey, is research informed. Four phases to the process. Real quickly, engage, recruit, select, and transition. And Chris is going to talk about the first two phases. Chris, you can begin with the next slide, which is on the engage phase. And if she's having problems with that.
Okay. Hi. Yeah, sorry. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, please. Go ahead. Do you hear us, is the question?
Can you hear me now?
We can. Can you hear us?
Okay, thank you. Yes. I can. Thank you. Yes, I'm, I think probably one of the key phases of the process is the engage phase. I know that from your materials, I can tell that you all are a very inclusive district and you're interested in involving your community in every step of this process. So that's probably one of the strengths of our firm. The first thing we'll do, of course, is to develop a plan with you to identify with you the key groups and the key individuals in your community who need to be consulted. And we'll be interviewing those people. We'll be conducting focus groups. We'll be doing board interviews, of course, with each one of you to get, make sure that we get your voices represented, not only as a board altogether, but also as your individual voices. We'll be conducting a forum. Usually, most districts choose to have some kind of public forum or town hall meeting. We'll be working with you to plan that, should you choose to do that. And then, of course, there's a community survey that we'll be conducting as well. Once we have all that information, we'll be compiling all that information into a leadership profile and some selection criteria for the, for you all to review and approve. That will guide every other stage of the process. And we'll be using that profile to identify candidates who are most closely aligned with the things that you and your community have told us you want to see in your next superintendent. In the recruit phase, we will, of course, be advertising widely through our firm, as well as our individual connections that Peter, Kelvin, and I all have. We will be reaching out to various groups and various individuals to make sure that we have a broad reach for, to find the very best candidate for you that we can. We will be doing very proactive recruitment, and we will do very thorough screening and interviewing. One of the things that we do when we reference check is we, we check references not only on the candidates, not only on the references that are listed by our candidates, because we know that they're going to list people who will speak knowledgeably, but also sometimes positively about their background. We want to reach beyond that, so it's very typical for us to look for individuals with whom they've worked or for whom they've worked, that they may not have listed in that list. And then, of course, we'll be preparing those materials for you and presenting those to you as well.
Thank you. Next is the select phase. This consists of working closely, of course, with the board throughout. And at this point, we would present a slate of candidates, and you would determine the size of the slate. And we'll bring that to you for interviews. We'll use questions that you submit that are based upon the profile for your interviewing script. And we'll also use questions from the profile in the screening interviews. So when we're talking to people, the focus is going to be on the criteria, the characteristics that you set for the next superintendent. And we'll gain some very reliable information on the candidate's past through the questions about achievement and the style of operating in our screening interviews. And we'll share that information with you as well. We'll also present a workshop prior to your interviews. You probably, a lot of you have engaged in interviews, but we have a protocol and we have some good ideas about what the law will allow and not allow in terms of interviewing. And we'll share that with you in a workshop fashion. We'll facilitate the writing of the script, as we said, and we'll also facilitate the debriefing of your interviews after you've completed the first round to see who you want to select for the second round. We'll also do the debriefing after the second round. And then as you begin to focus in on a single person as a finalist, we'll guide you through the deep background check and highly recommended a site visit. Next is the transition phase. And just real briefly about this, we'll assist you as needed in the development of a contract on behalf of the board. And we can help with the planning of what we call the success plan or the entry plan for the selected individual. We'll also help you structure a conversation on goal setting based upon what we've learned through the research, both in the terms of the survey and the listening sessions that we will carry out. And by the way, typically in a district this size, we do 20 to 25 meetings of listening sessions. I have a timer here to keep me on time. Next, just to talk briefly about our portal. The portal is a valuable communication device. It keeps tabs on all the documents so that you have access to all the documents that are generated throughout the search. And it's the kind of thing that you might want to use frequently. Then next is communications. We defer to your methods of communication and your preferred methods, and we'll follow that. We also have in the portal templates with sample questions for interviewing and much more. We'll also provide frequent updates using your preferred use of communication. And we'll make available to your communication department valuable information that they can put on your website. We suggest that they devote at least a page or so to superintendent's search. So this is our process, as quickly as we can share it with you. Remember, though, that each aspect of it is customizable because we think that the board should be involved as much as possible. We did share with you a possible calendar. This is a sample to show the format. It demonstrates how we It demonstrates how we can assist you. Again, we'll tailor it to the timeline that you prefer. This shows the superintendent selection by January. Our process, which calls for an extensive outreach, allows for recruiting of about four to five weeks, which we think is reasonable, once the development of the profile is complete. So again, it all can be customized to your needs. Kelvin's going to talk about this next slide.
Members of our team have presented at both of these conferences. There's a real commitment to diversity in terms of identifying candidates, supporting candidates, and placing candidates from a diverse background, whether that's ethnicity, whether that's gender, and quite frankly, even experience based on the request that the board is putting together in terms of the kind of candidate they're looking to support. On the next slide, you will see how that commitment to equity is really laid out in the reality of the successful searches that have been done by members of this team. But understand clearly that there's a real commitment around identifying diverse candidates, surfacing on diverse candidates, and I obviously give you an opportunity to select from that pool.
So what we've shown on this next slide are 16 searches that were engaged in by members of this team. Only once was the guarantee used. Of the 16 searches, 10 were minorities and five were females of the superintendents that were ultimately selected in the 16 searches. We present diverse slates. We also remind you that the vast majority of those chosen did not originally apply for the position. The size ranges of these 16 searches, from 4,000 students to over 200,000. The first and the last are outliers. On the average, it's about 47,000 students in these searches that we've selected, ranging realistically from about 10,000 or 11,000 up to 70,000 to 80,000. So we've put some reasons out there why you might want to consider us, but one of them is our guarantees. And here are the guarantees. First of all, we'll be with you throughout the search until you're satisfied. Secondly, we'll extend the guarantee to two years employment. And thirdly, we'll keep our hands off anybody that you might select and not try to recruit them away from you. That's a practice that's been in actuality in our firm for quite some time. And we also have a price match guarantee. How's it coming down the home stretch? We hope that you've heard from our references. If you haven't, we invite you. We furnish some phone numbers. And if you know some people in the districts where we did searches and we didn't list them, feel free to call them as well. We strongly recommend that.
I've got one minute left here.
Okay, thank you. So we're not committed to any other search at this time. So this team would be working exclusively with you and we're ready to participate alongside of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to present this evening and hope that you'll contact us between now and next Monday. And we've left some business cards with Laurel. And we've also left a copy of the research study that was done behind our survey, a copy of the survey, and a copy of the survey report. So once again, we say thank you and hope you have a successful evening tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. Sam will take about five minutes for...
Is there a cost proposal with this?
I didn't see it included. It might be in the proposal. Oh.
Peter, is there, did you include the cost with the information that you presented to me? In the original proposal?
Yes.
Okay, did you send that to David?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on.
Okay. Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. I know you sent me the presentation, but I don't remember seeing it.
Right.
In a couple of minutes here to just go in, and we'll be ready for you in about three and a half minutes. Lane, do you have additional handouts for them? Okay.
Right, just leave it for...
Yes.
Yeah. It's 27,000. Turns through.
Oh, I see.
Turns right. Right. Yep, yep. If I can just announce that if you may. Yep. All right. We're all passing these down.
Well, actually, I think that we should do, we should... So... This is for the current one that's coming.
Our third and final presentation will be from GR Recruiting. Gary?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Gary Ray and I'm president and CEO of GR Recruiting. And it's a pleasure to be here tonight, tell you about the services that we could provide on your next superintendent's search. And I have our team here. And I've been doing searches for 40, 40-plus years. And I've given you a handout that's got the proposal, and I'll be referring to that off and on. And then, we have a PowerPoint that'll be together, together with it. So I have Dick Christie here. Dick, tell you a little bit about your experience.
I've worked with Gary Ray and the search business since 1978, probably done 130-plus searches during that time period. I served 20 years as superintendent of schools with Council Bluffs. Previous to that, at one point, back a little ways, I was high school principal at Lindmar. So somewhat familiar with this particular area. And I would also add, I was executive director of the Metropolitan Normal Educational Consortium at UNO, University of Nebraska Omaha. And in that role, I worked with all the K-12 school districts in the, in the Omaha metropolitan area, including Council Bluffs, as well as community colleges and the universities. And that'd be a, and, and an urban kind of an organization. So that's the sum of me, at least the highlights. Thank you.
I want to introduce the team here because these are the folks that are going to be helping on the search. And we're not to sell the job, we're here to work the job here. Okay, Lane?
Hi, I'm Lane Pluggie. I've been a professional educator for, well, I worked for 44 years. I worked just north of you, or south of you, for a little while at Iowa City, so I know the UEN very well. I was, left the superintendency and finished my career at... Okay, I was an elementary teacher, principal, and superintendent.
Deb?
Hi, I'm Deb Smith. Superintendent of Human Resources and Equity for the Waterloo Community School District. I've worked in a number of districts doing training. In fact, I was a part of a team that did the training for the leadership team of Cedar Rapids in cultural competency. I hope I have an opportunity to work with all of you.
Deb and I have worked on a number of searches. The, the slide we have here to start with is about GR Recruiting. I was president of Ray and Associates, the firm that first started. And then, I was a founder and CEO of that for about 38, 39 years. And, and I was pretty comfortable where I was at, but a number of my associates said, hey, we, we want you to come back. Some of the folks are here and about 50 others. And I decided to come back. But one of the things I wanted to do is not just do searches to find people, we needed to support the people. So that's our mission is we're committed to our clients by recruiting and supporting outstanding educational leaders, rather than just put them there. We, I really felt that we needed to do that. And if you look on our proposal, the real thick document here, it says proposal on page three of that document, there's a, a third paragraph there that says that, really about that mission, is that we're not only concerned about placing somebody, but their actual performance at the district under their leadership. How are they doing? And that's really important. So we partner with K-12 Insight, and they're a national firm that does survey work, and they're all about customer service. How are people feeling about the school district? How are the employees feeling about that? So we partner with them on our survey. And I'll talk to you a little bit later about that. The search team, I've already introduced these folks and they've introduced themselves. But I also would want you to look on page six and seven of our proposal because we're not alone here. On page six of our proposal is a team member, her name is Gloria Davis. I didn't want to bring everybody, you know, in the country. But Gloria has worked with me on a number of search, searches. She just finished Raytown, Missouri with me, as well as Springfield. She worked on that search, as well as some others here. But Gloria is very active in NAPSE. In fact, she is, that's a national alliance for black educators. And in fact, she's helping them put together their 50th anniversary. And so she will help us recruit as well and will be part of the team. On page seven, there's two more local people from Iowa, Dale Monroe, as well as Linda Brock. They both have 15 years' experience. So that's going to be your team, along with some other folks. Next slide. Experience, we've already talked about how experienced we are between this group here. We've got over 150 years of search experience. So we, we do know how to recruit. Let me talk to you a little bit about some samples of Iowa searches. And you'll see this team and others have worked on a lot of the Iowa urban searches around the state. The next sample of searches we've done are national searches. That's Fairfax County, we've done that, Virginia, I worked on that along with Gloria. But these are various urban districts that we have worked in around the country. In fact, if you would go to page 13 of our proposal, I, I want to point out some of the districts that we have worked at. On that proposal, on that proposal on page 13, you'll see five years of schools that we have worked with and recruited. And 40%, 43% of the schools that we have worked in the last five years, we have placed people of color. And in fact, our average placement of this team is nearly eight years in the urban district, districts. And in this list, they're all still there except for one who, who has retired. And so I think it's important for you to know just a few of these out of here. The first female superintendent for Springfield, Illinois, African-American lady, we placed there. The first female in Raytown, African-American lady. In Omaha, I recruited Cheryl Logan for that particular job as well. So the next slide here, let's talk a little bit about the timeline. If you look at page 11 on our proposal, that document, that's a couple of pages back. These are the tasks that we're going to be looking at, you know? When you start a search, I know that a number of you folks have not been through a search. And let me tell you a little bit about the search process. Our first meeting is going to be with you to do the following things on this page. We're going to establish the operation procedures. Where, who's going to be our board contact? Who's going to be our end district contact? We're going to talk about building a timeline, establishing meetings, strategies for advertisement, recruiting, and developing materials. And then, and then the staff and stakeholder involvement, that's big. That's something we do, you know, very, very, very well. And then, the search process of getting stakeholders involved of organizations and various groups is really important as far as building trust in the search process. Then we will go out and recruit candidates to that profile, once that's been built and established. I will tell you that our survey is a lot different than other, other search firms. We're not just looking at characteristics on the profile, leadership characteristics. We have 28. They're a research base on what districts are looking for superintendents in today's market. But there's a second part of that that I mentioned about K-12 Insight. That second part is about customer service, additional information from stakeholders and from staff that we'll bring to you on customer service. How do they feel that the school district is handling certain items and communications? And that's important because that information will go to the new superintendent. He and she will, he or she will use that in their, in their transition, in their entry plan as a takeover of the position. And that information, we have found, to be just vital for success for the new superintendent coming in. So you can see that we have the recruitment piece in, in phase three. We're going to present these candidates to you. We have a video that I started with my old firm that you'll get to see all the materials. You'll see a, a video, candidates answering... You'll see a video, candidates answering two or three questions pertaining to this position. And you'll get that, all the information we share with you. We have a scoring instrument that I've developed to build consensus for you to determine who you're going to interview, along with developing interview questions. You've got to develop interview questions based on their profile. Otherwise, you know, why ask those questions? And so that's extremely important. So there'll be two or three rounds of interview. And the board's going to work with us to decide, you know, the format, you know, what are the stages, who's going to be involved. And we're going to also help with the entry plan and assist you in introducing the new superintendent. And that's an overview of what timeline might look like. If we look at the process here, this is the whole process that we were talking about, about the design. But if you go to page eight of our proposal, it's going to go into a little bit more about the school board involvement. You're going to approve all our advertisement. But the difference between us and maybe some of our competitors is that I'm going to be at the Council of Great City Schools, that's the urban group, and I'm going to be there. And that's Orlando. Gloria's going to be at the NAPSE, you know, convention, along with some of our other folks who are planning that National Alliance Black Educator Group. And Alice as well. I'll have Robert Arfaro, he'll be there with me in Kentucky. So we have all those various groups, we're going to, you know, conventions we'll be at. We're going to be at the Iowa convention, as well as, you know, many, many, many others. And if I could have you go over to page nine quickly, and then I'll get into a wrap-up here, is on the staff and stakeholder involvement. We will, we will have enough folks here on the ground to meet, any groups that you want. Our survey is done in multiple languages as well. And I will tell you about recruiting. We will not only recruit candidates. Your next superintendent here in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, probably is like the last three jobs we did. They did not even know they were going to be a candidate. And so your good candidates are doing good work where they're at. So they're going to have to be recruited. And that's one thing we do. We aggressively recruit. And we will bring you a very diverse, you know, pool of candidates. And all these candidates will be screened, all the criminal investigation on any background of anybody, that's all in our pricing. And that's important for you, you know, for you to know. The next slide here on stakeholder engagements, I already talked about that. That's one of the things we do best. We'll have public meetings, we'll have private meetings, we'll have any kind of meetings that you want. That's important that we do a good job of listening. The final steps and ongoing is a two-year guarantee. No matter who's on the board, we're going to have a two-year guarantee. In all the years that I've done this, I've only had to do a guarantee one time. That was in Kentucky, where I placed somebody, and the governor from Arkansas, Michael Huckleby, took him out. And I went back and did it for free anyway. The board said I didn't have to, but I did. You know, my words, my bond. We will also assist the development of the entry plan for the new superintendent, the transition, and the listening tour. We'll do all that with K-12, that's all included in our fee. And we also will provide the new superintendent two years of support. By that I mean coaching, and some people call it coaching, but we call it advising. Whether it's on-the-job performance or just needing assistance, that goes in with our mission statement, to provide support. The equity and diversity and inclusion, I want to speak real quickly about that. On page twelve of our proposal, if you haven't seen it, I want to just talk a little bit about it. Bev was involved in that, and along with a number of our other associates. A lot of people put equity, inclusion on their website, but what have they done? We have developed five modules for school districts around the country with some of the best people in the country to offer that to our school district. So I, you know, to the schools that we work with. And I will also tell you that we have been extremely successful bringing urban superintendents to the profile. If I could have you take a quick look at page seventeen. That, page seventeen, on some of the urban members of the Council of Great City Schools. All those school districts are urban districts that were going to be at that convention. And this team, along with myself, have recruited superintendents in every one of those districts. Every one of them. So we do know how to recruit, you know, candidates very, very strongly. And I want to talk to you a little bit, to wrap up, is always cost. We have costs. And you see the cost there. Everything I've talked to you is included in our cost. We're estimating twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. The base fee is seventeen-five. Yep, got it within a few seconds.
So that is our three presentations. Give board members about five minutes to review. Just want to comment, you do have that rubric. There are supporting documents, Laura, I believe, that we have, the presentation and the proposal, so.
I sent the proposal, and then you can send the other two that you, I just sent you one this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as far as getting the scoring matrix to you, probably sometime tomorrow?
Does new wage change? Work for people? Those rubrics back?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Pardon?
Scan them.
That'd be fine, yep. Whatever works the best.
I'm waiting and smiling.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for your time.
This evening, we are going to do a high-level overview. So about a month ago, came to you with a whole presentation about data. But we have our fall scores back on FAST, iReady, and MAPS. So tonight, quick high-level overview with the plan after we get the winter data to do another deep dive, middle of the year, right after the holiday break. So again, what we're focusing on, right, is closing those student achievement gaps. We're focusing on proficiency, we're focusing on growth. We're also focusing on that graduation rate as our system indicator. So all of our work is going through those goals, and we're really focused tonight on that student learning aspect. So as an Office of Learning and Leadership, we have some very intentional goals to get us to achieve those system indicators. I'm going to review these quickly, but they're so important to our work. One point, too, is really around that sense of belonging, which attaches to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and how did we develop that in our system? One point four, we continue to work on PLCs, but making those processes tighter and making sure we have the resources for teachers available to functionally operate as that PLC together. Two point four is all about this year being really tight on our evaluation process, and more importantly, that feedback piece and the modeling for our teachers, for administrators across the board, for our entire system. And that teach boost is giving us actually the format and foundation to be able to pull that data easily and not be sending papers off to district office and not just have it as a compliance piece, but really as a growth piece for our system and for all of us as staff. We all deserve feedback and modeling. And then, as always, that guaranteed and viable curriculum, defining what that is and making sure teachers have those resources and tools. So it's that combination of the art and science of teaching. So first is that FAST assessment, Formative Assessment System for Teachers. And we give it in fall, winter, and spring. And the two areas we're looking at are reading and math. So if you look at the comparison of the fall of twenty-one, twenty-two, all the way on the left, to this year, you can see pretty consistent. You can also see where we're really excited. We show some growth last year in the winter, growth in the spring, come back down kind of in the fall. That has been the trend line. So we're trying to see what are those promising practices that we talked about about a month ago, or some things that we can keep those scores up, not have that slide and really start off the year stronger with our fall data. But as you can see, it's quite comparable when we look at reading in our elementary level. When we go to our math at our elementary level, it stays more consistent all the way across the board, which I think, as the board, you know, we have new resources we're putting in place and some of that intentional training. Tanya Johnson alluded to that at the beginning. So really intentional PL around those resources, that guaranteed and viable curriculum, focusing on those PLCs, and also getting our administrators and coaches in classrooms to provide that feedback. We really are excited to see what happens to these scores. Now, you also probably know when you have new resources, there's sometimes a little bit of a dip before it goes up. But the feedback we're getting from staff is that this is what we've needed. We just have to keep giving them the time to be able to have those conversations because it's a lot for them to figure out and go through as teachers and staff members in our system. Middle schools, we do iReady, and iReady is quite rigorous. So before, when we looked at this, really it's the green and the yellow. So we did that because the predictor of proficiency on ISAS was really those two somewhat together, a hundred percent and that eighty-five percent. But trend lines are somewhat similar. So if we look again and compare fall of twenty-one, twenty-two to fall of this year, as you can see, quite similar across the board. And this is, of course, for, sorry, this is for our middle school reading level. But we're hoping, again, for the trend line of increases as we go. And then iReady, middle school math. Again, quite similar if we look at the fall, to fall of twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. But there was increases and improvements as we went throughout the year. Here again, we have DESMOs in math. So our middle school math instructors have additional resources, additional training. It's all new, they're learning as well. But we've had positive feedback around that, and as long as we keep listening and learning together as a team and giving them some of that intentional time to really dig into those resources and align those things, I am confident we're going to keep seeing those increases as we go throughout the year. And also, hopefully, next year, when we come back with the fall data, we'll see that bump as well. Lastly, we have high school MAPS assessment, which is pretty new to our system. We give that now fall, winter. There hasn't been consistency to that. We gave it last year, winter, spring. But as we're learning more, we're doing things a little bit differently. So if we look at reading scores, again, we don't have as many because it was only given two times. But fall, compared to this fall, a little bit of a dip, you can see, of five percent at the below the fortieth percentile. So high school staff are well aware of that, as long as administrators being intentional, again, about what are those promising practices and things we can do. If we look at the math, also, little bit of a dip between fall of last year, fall of this year. High school math is something we're also exploring and working on aligning and providing some additional resources. A little more challenging because you have a wide array of courses in math. So really trying to get teachers together, what are the needs that they have? What are the resources they need? What is the alignment? And then what does that professional learning look like around that? We have not, we don't have that rolled out yet. We'll be this year collecting more information from them. We did a pause at the end of last year based on their feedback. This year, really listening, gathering that information to provide some additional resources and supports for our high school teachers for math. And we will keep you updated on what that looks like. Very excited to see what the future for high school math looks like as well. And I also did include science. Yay! Because I knew you guys would be interested. So fall again of last year, if you look, close comparison, but a little bit of a dip. So high school's taken a little bit of a dip. We had a lot of students that were out that did the virtual learning. We still have more of them doing that. I'm not saying that's where the dip lies, but really digging into the data and how can we get those increases back up? And what does that look like? Questions from the board?
Director Boarding?
Yeah, I have a question. So it seems like pretty consistently that there's a difference in those, between the fall scorings at high school, but not at middle school and elementary school. So I'm sure there's a portion of that decrease that's due to summer slump, but it seems like that learning loss is really more evident at the high school level than at the elementary school and the middle school level. And I'm wondering if you can tell me why.
I would be writing books and doing motivational speaking right now. But I definitely think we focus on credit recovery, right, at the high school level and those graduation rates, which is all important. But I think that's what we drive educators to, and not just about these scores. We also haven't had a diagnostic at the high school level before this year, and now we have MYPATH. So I'm excited, the high school teachers are excited, the administrators are excited about really digging in. Because sometimes there are those gaps, right, that we don't even know exist, and unless we have some type of diagnostic tool, we can't figure out necessarily what those next steps are. So we're excited to see students that are doing the dip or are having the gap or aren't showing growth, what is some of that supplemental pieces that we can give to them educationally? Sure. Maybe that's tutoring, maybe that's changing core instruction in the classroom. There's lots of different variables that can impact that.
Sure. Kind of in follow-up with that, and I know that there's been, especially within the math curriculum, I'm wondering if there's a real defined vertical articulation between curriculum, between elementary, middle, middle, and high?
We are going to be working on creating that, but right now, I would say there is not. Even with different resources, we wanted to make sure people had an opportunity to pick out resources that aligned with what their needs were, but that articulation has to be put in place. And also, there's some high school courses, we're trying to figure out, should we be offering them as math electives? Should we not be offering them? What does that look like? And what does that look like for our system when we have students? I mean, math is hard, as we all know, right? And I think... And I think, I don't think. We all know the rigor has increased over the past how many years? So being able to figure that out and balance that out, so we have some work ahead of us, especially in the area of math. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from the board? We recently did a deep dive on student achievement, and you had alluded, you know, we'll do another one coming up soon. Can you just give us a timeline on when will we have more data and when would you expect to go deeper on this?
Would expect to come back, like, in February after we have the results for winter FAST and iReady and MAP. Back and again, do that deep dive, and really talk about some of those promising practices, again, happening in our buildings that are seeing results.
Thank you. Director Merschbach?
First, more of a comment, really. You know, we always see these charts, and we see this big red portion of the bar graph, and, you know, maybe it's just me, but I see red, I think bad, you know? And I guess it's what it's supposed to be based on what the results are, but I don't know, I just, I don't know if we should present it that way. It's like I see kids all around the city, outside of the context of when they're in their classroom. I don't see good kids, bad kids, you know, like, just a comment, I guess. I'm always a little skeptical of these testing regimes, anyway. But the other question is, when you're looking at the different grades, and I think high school might be different, middle school and elementary might be more similar than high school, but are these really measuring the same thing? We've got percent at above benchmark, you know, for elementary school, we've got on grade level for middle school, and then we've got at or above 40th percentile for the high school ones. Are they really measuring it in the same way? Because not everybody can be above the 40th percentile, right? Is that, am I understanding that correctly in terms of how these measurements are? Because, I mean, you look at those numbers for the high school, it's, you know, about 60% is above and about 40% is below, and that's what you would expect numbers-wise. So is that really comparing us to other school districts and other students across the state, whereas the other ones are looking at a proficient, not proficient, or on-grade level, not grade level? If that question makes sense? I don't know, I just, it seems like they're measuring different things, but I might have that wrong.
I think there's a lot of pieces to what you're asking, so I would say we're definitely measuring proficiency and what is defined as proficiency. So I also would say FAST and iReady and MAP are all different screeners for different levels, so they are a little different, but they also all, and I didn't talk about this, but they correlate to ISASP, which is our measure of student achievement, which we're compared through right throughout the state of Iowa. So it's a snapshot in time, so it's not the be-all, end-all, but you can see trends. And if we really want to do things different instructionally or find out what students' needs are, teachers do this so well, and I mean, it's, it's an art and a science, to really dig into what each student needs is very different. But this is a snapshot high level. Do I think we can increase and not have as much red? Maybe I should do a different color, purple? Whatever color it is, yes, we want to reduce that, and we should be able to reduce that. The goal would be to, like, 80% proficient at least.
And so for the high school one, when it's at or above 40th percentile, if we get more people above the 40th percentile, does that mean someone in another district is now, you know, below the 40th percentile? It's not like curve, I guess. I don't know what the terminology is, but.
Yeah, I get, you're talking the bell curve statistically and measures, but no, I would say if we increase, somebody else doesn't have to decrease, right? I mean, proficiency is defined
Okay.
by each of those assessments. And I'm not explaining that probably pretty, very well, but we can have, let's follow up on that.
Any additional questions?
When I look down at the charts here, and when I see the red, below percentile, is there a way we can get a breakdown on race and ethnicity? Because I know one of the goals is, and our focus, is to close that achievement gap. And when I see it that way, I really need to have an understanding to see where our students are at.
Absolutely. I will get that shared, we have it created, so I can get it to Board Secretary Day, and she can get it to all of you.
And then when I look at the below, below the 40th percentile, do we have enough programs in place right now to move that gauge? Because I feel like, yes, we're making progress, but are we making enough progress? Because we have elementary, we go to middle school and to high school, and to really get a better understanding, are the programs we have in place impacting closing the achievement gap for our students within our district? Because I know we have a lot of programs that support, but are they doing the work that we need to close that achievement gap?
I think there's always opportunity to shift and to look at results, and if that isn't working, we need to pivot in what our programming looks like. So yes, there are some that we aren't getting the results that we're expecting or wanting, which means we have to ask for something different and do something different, which has happened and is happening this year. I am confident we are doing the right work and that we are going to see shifts in this. And it's been a rough couple of years, and I know COVID pandemic and so forth had a lot of changes. We're getting back to where we were, and now we're going to soar forward and start getting even better. Quality teachers in the classroom is what improved scores look like. Our staff are working so hard, they're doing such a fabulous job, they're open to learning new things, we're providing that modeling, we're providing that feedback, and all of those goals that we're doing intentionally as a system are going to get us better strategic indicators and meeting our goals at a higher level, and I'm 100% confident of that. It's not going to happen overnight, though, right? It's going to take some time. But people are working hard, and I do think we have a lot of the right supports in place. It's sometimes, how do we need to support the supports that are in place, right? And what is it they need?
Great. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
With no further business, we stand adjourned.